Could we all stand for the salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Dolgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Alves?
Here.
Commissioner Dimatay?
Here.
Commissioner Woodward, absent. Commissioner Runtine, absent. Commissioner Watts?
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's Planning Commission meeting. It is open virtual and in-person. Participation may be observed online through the Placer County website. If you would like to make public comment on any item today, the Planning Commission clerk will announce when you are to line up to provide testimony. If you are calling in at the appropriate time, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please prepare to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include, one, public comment for matters not included on the agenda, two, consent item, or a hearing item. Each commenter will be entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. Please be advised that today's hearing is being recorded. Now, I'd like to call up the Planning Director for his report. Thanks, Chris.
Good morning. Chair Dimatay, Commissioners, Chris Pahouli, Planning Director, have a few updates for the Commission this morning. First, wanted to start with some board actions and upcoming items that will be before the Board. First to report out, on February 27th in Tahoe, the Board did consider two items. They considered the Snow Museum, the Sierra Nevada Olympic and Winter Museum. They did take action to certify the final environmental impact report. I should note that they did not take any action on the entitlements related to that project. That will come back at a later date. That will be first considered by the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then it will go on to the Board. At that meeting, the Board also considered the Country Acres Solar Project, which was previously considered and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. They did approve that suite of entitlements, including a general plan amendment. Upcoming items before the Board, on April 3rd, the Board will be hearing a presentation on the Community Development Resource Agency's 2425 budget, including the Planning Division's budget. Wanted to note that for you. And then, also in April, on the 23rd, the Board will be considering the Hammond House number one inclusion on the historic registry. That item was heard previously by the Planning Commission and recommended for approval. Did want to note that upcoming Planning Commission meetings in April, we do intend to hold an April 11th and an April 25th meeting, so wanted to note that for the Commissioners. Speaking of the April 25th meeting, I wanted to note the proposed schedule for the Housing Rezone Program and proposed Sunset Area Plan Amendment. So, the first thing that I wanted to note for the Commission is that we are looking to bring the Sunset Area Plan Amendments, a package of amendments, together with the Rezone Program package. The Sunset Area Plan Amendments will include a rezone to the Cincinnati Avenue properties that have been previously discussed by the Commission and by the Board. At this time, the schedule for the Rezone Program is April 25th before the Planning Commission, and we are scheduled currently for a May 21st date before the Board of Supervisors. That concludes my comments and happy to answer questions.
Any Commissioners have questions for Chris?
I have a question. The Sunset Area Plan, that's the one right next, adjacent to Placer 1?
Correct.
And Cincinnati Avenue, it would be too late to include it in the RENA numbers.
No, the intent is to rezone those properties and include them in the Housing Element Amendment, which would be submitted following the final action on the Rezone Program.
But what about the EIR and the draft EIR?
For the Sunset Area Plan Amendments, staff is working on an addendum to the EIR for the Sunset Area Plan.
That's great news. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question with regards to the SEDRA Administrator. Is that, what's the status of that position?
There is a recruitment that will be going out very shortly for a Director for SEDRA.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Currently, Crystal Jacobson continues to serve as the Acting Director.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? I have no questions. Thank you, Chris. At this time, I wanted to announce that Commissioner Dolgren and Commissioner Alves and I went to Long Beach for a Planning Commission Academy training, and at this time, if they wanted to comment on that, I wanted to allow them time to, you know, give some feedback to the public if you wanted to.
Sorry. Yeah, that wasn't part of the training. Yeah, good morning. Yeah, we intended that three-day class, and for me, as a new Commissioner, it was valuable. There were a number of presentations, two and a half days' worth. Each day started out with consolidated presentations, and in the afternoons had presentations that you could choose from. I, myself, as a new Commissioner, chose those that were applicable to kind of the Planner 101, which was actually, or Commissioner 101, which is actually the title of one of those. So, very valuable information. Were able to share thoughts with other organizations. There were large tables, people from all over the state, so a lot of good input, a lot of good discussion, and very valuable.
And I think that one of the most important, powerful things for me was the new legislation that's coming down. They have attorney panels, and they talk about all the legislation that's coming down, and it changes so frequently. We talk about bills that they have pending, ones that they're supporting. Was it CalCities, is that who?
Yeah, it was CalCities.
So, if you go to the CalCities website, they have the materials, the actual presentations that we had during the session. So, if you're interested at all in some of the housing law that's coming down the pike, go to CalCities Backsplash Planning Commissioner Conference. I think that's what it was. And they had a really, a wealth of information. The agenda was the same as last year, which was a little disappointing, but some of the content was new, which was helpful. But, the interesting thing is, we'd probably, I don't know, 800 people there, or 1,000, and they asked how many were new Planning Commissioners in the room, and it was half of the room, which was very different from last year. So, I think that's why they, you know, did a rehash of what we had gone through last year. But it was very valuable.
Yeah, just to add to the magnitude of what you just discussed, they overviewed 27 active legislative bills. Of those 27, they're part of 225 that that organization is monitoring and making recommendations on. So, there's a lot of, a lot of action out there.
Yeah, and they all, they all kind of tied into what's happening here in our community as far as trying to push more housing and stuff like that, and they are trying to fight them, but like they said, there was probably 27 bills that are out there to try and attach to these. So, there is a lot of work going on out there, and a lot of work for our staff and us to try to, and those legal cities to help try to push back what's, you know, being, trying to force down our throat. So, it was good. It was very informational.
The biggest issue that we talked about with all of our colleagues, all the cities and the counties that were there, that were represented by their Planning Commissioners, was this RENA issue. That's what we talked about the entire three days. Everybody is in the same situation we're in, and some of the communities that we talked to are really, really small, tiny communities that have nowhere to build, like, for instance, Carmel by the Sea, I ended up sitting next to them at lunch, talking about how that's affecting them. It was fascinating to hear all of us going through the same thing at the same time with the same issues.
Yeah, we are definitely not alone-
Oh, no.
-on this boat. This is a packed ship of the same problems across the entire state, and everybody is facing the same thing that we're doing, and they're fighting back just as hard as we are. So, it is just to let you know that we are not alone. So, it was very informational for us. It's good to always go back and learn what other cities and counties are doing, and knowing that they're all on the same boat with us. So, that's all I got for myself. So, all right, thank you, guys. Okay. I will now open a public comment for matters not on the Planning Commission agenda, so if anybody would like to come and speak on something that's not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to step up to the plate.
Does it work? Yeah, it is working. It is.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Rick Reedman. I'm a resident of the Dry Creek area. I want to speak about the rezone. The process, the way it's gone through, has been really inconsistent at best. The last time I spoke here, I really felt like the Commissioners listened to what I had to say, and I appreciate that. I believe one of the comments after the speaking was that it wasn't quite ready for primetime. But, as Director Pahouli, I hope, Pahouli, I didn't say that too badly, said that Placer County is no longer considered a rural county. We've built so many homes that we're now considered an urban county, and I find it embarrassing that if we've built that many homes in the county, why is this report that's going to come up say that we have zero extremely low, zero very low, and just a handful of low-income homes that were built with all that process when the county's requirement is a 10% low-income housing? It hasn't been adhered to. The pay in lieu of, which was supposed to be restricted to developments of 100 homes or less, obviously wasn't adhered to. It's ridiculous. And I would like to talk to, actually, I'd like to encourage you guys all, if you haven't already, to go out to each of these sites that they're trying to rezone into multifamily dwellings. The one that I drive by every day is Site 7 on Vineyard Road. It's a long, very thin parcel, and if you build that apartment building there, you are condemning the person directly east of that property to a life of no sunshine. They'll never be able to grow another vegetable on that piece of property, because all they'll have is morning sun. The rest of the day, it'll be shade. You go over to Site 8, the Strawberry Patch. Number one, you'll be putting a local small business out of business. You'll be lessening the access to fresh fruits and vegetables in a community where many of us have lived there for decades. So, it gives us the impression that instead of putting these in these new developments where people are paying 8, 900, a million dollars for their homes, you'd rather put it with the elderly, the disabled, and the low-income folks that have lived in this county for decades upon decades. Absolutely ludicrous. Sites 9 and 10 across from Dry Creek School. If anyone's ever been on Cucuriolo during pickup or drop-off, ingress and egress out of that complex will be impossible during those times. So, if there's a fire, people are going to die, because there's not going to be any way out. It's horrific. I just thank you for listening, and that's, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Hello, my name is Tammy Reedman. I'm with the Cowboy. I want to talk about the children. Okay, you want to put multi-dwelling homes on Vineyard. You've driven down Vineyard, obviously. We have no shoulders, no sidewalks, no streetlights, but no shoulders. Multi-dwelling homes, low income, these kids are latchkey, okay? They have to walk to school. They can see the school from where you want to build. They have to walk down Vineyard. A child is going to die. I am so worried that a child is going to be harmed. Plus, the parents are at work. They're going to come out to play. They've got to go somewhere. Where are they going to go? Across the street with the bulls? Or they're going to come ride down Vineyard? That's their only option, Vineyard. Then you've got the school and those apartments right there, like Rick was saying. You can't drive down that road. Those kids are going to be walking on that road. Please, think about these children. Our babies are going to be harmed. Protect them, please. I know you guys are in a tough spot, but we live out in the country. You want to bring the city to our country. We have flies, we have animals, we have everything out there that the city doesn't belong. My family grew up in Rialinda. You know what happened to Rialinda? Sacramento County allowed all of that to happen, and people left Rialinda. They came to Roseville to live a decent life. I don't want where I live to become Rialinda. It was a beautiful place when I was young. It's not now. Please don't make Dry Creek like that. Think about it. Put these houses or these structures where there aren't acreages of people living. There's already people being, houses being built out there, but nobody lives out there except those homeowners. Please don't bring the city to my country. Thank you. And protect my babies.
Hi, I'm Laura Bullard, and I'm here to oppose the rezoning of the Dry Creek area, Sites 7, 8, 9, and 10, which are all zoned ag-residential, okay? And I grew up next to 8, which is next to the Strawberry Patch. My 93-year-old mother still lives there, okay? Come visit us, and I'll actually give you a feel, not just drive-by. Those are, drive-bys are bad, okay? You are the Planning Commission, okay? Planning involves proactive action to avoid future problems, not reactive action to avert problems created when you have not planned. Proactive action is logical, left-brain activity, whereas reactive action is a right-brained, emotional, which is usually, leads to more problems. The county has had a proactive plan in place for decades that required developers to plan for diverse housing elements within their new developments. Part of that was for each of them to set aside 10% of their new developments to provide for the building of affordable housing. That plan was slightly altered in 2020, when the county passed the ordinance 6050B to specifically deal with the lack of affordable housing. So, how has that planning gone? Apparently not too well, because they allowed the new developments to get away with not setting their land aside and not building that new housing. As is contained in the report that I believe is going to be reviewed today, since the adoption of your latest housing element, zero low and extremely low units have been built, and only 118 low-income ones have been built. In addition, when you submitted your last plan to the state in 2021, you were 1,217 units short of what should have been planned for, and now you are coming to the long-established rural communities like Dry Creek, which have been a community that had plan in place for decades, that we were going to remain rural residential, to try to rezone us using 32 uses. I don't know where that came from, but only one of those actually meets the state requirement for low-income housing. So, why the other 31? And that's because you created the problem to make new developments adhere to the plan that was set forth long ago. Had you done that, by my calculations, you would have been only 10 units, and I have it here, and I'll submit it, 10 units short of your need. So, let's get back to the plan, and let's have those new developments, many of which have not been completely built yet, to do what they can to fulfill their obligation. We know some are willing. So, let's make a plan to actually make some affordable housing happen, so that we don't end up with a lawsuit like that happened in Clovis, because the lady couldn't find affordable housing. I realize that right now you are panicked because of the state is having a fit over the fact that you currently have not planned for affordable housing, but I fear that this county does not actually work to provide some of that housing, and will end up in a lawsuit, because it has never been built. So, do us all a favor, and let's stop and make a plan, and stick to it. Stop the rezoning madness.
Well, Laura's comments are more valuable than mine, so I'll cut mine a little bit short. My name is James Wallace. I also live in the Dry Creek community, and I'm here to talk on behalf of my children and all of the other kids that raise animals on our small family farms. Little background, my kids are third generation on our property. My father-in-law still lives there in an ADU with us. My wife grew up raising pigs for Dry Creek 4H on this property. She's now the co-community leader for Dry Creek 4H, and my kids are raising pigs on our property. You build, you allow high-density homes, housing to come in to our community, which from my house, in about three-quarters of a mile in any direction, you can hit one of these four new parcels, 7, 8, 9, and 10, and you allow high-density city living, basically, to come into our rural community, and like Tammy mentioned, next come complaints. You get flies, you get, people don't want to smell pigs, people don't want to hear my roosters crowing at 4:30 in the morning when they got to get up to be at work at 8 o'clock. They don't want to hear my livestock dog, who is barking at coyotes at night, keeping coyotes away from his herd of goats. People don't want that. Next thing, no, next thing, my children become the nuisance. Then, we get the same fate as any racetrack, small airport, or say, chicken farm that's ever had developments built around it. Our fate will be the same. Complaints come, and then we become the public nuisance, and then our operations stop. So, that means that we will have gone three generations of raising animals on this property, and then it stops with my kids. And then, my kids, my grandkids, which is our goal, is to, you know, keep this going, let our grandkids take over and continue this process, because agriculture in California is dying, but I don't want it to stop on my watch. So, please, think thoughtful about this. Let's get an extension. Let's find some better properties that we can, that we can rezone. Look at county-owned properties, look, and then also, like mentioned before, let's actually build the properties, build the low-income properties as needed in the new developments, rather than letting them buy out, so we don't end up back in this process over again, because when you're looking at half-acre to 10-acre parcels in the county, you're looking at these small rural communities, these small rural communities, because that's exactly, that's all that's left that's in that acreage range. So, I'll cut it short. Thank you very much. Your time.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Poliard, and I've been a long-term resident of Granite Bay, and have witnessed firsthand how Granite Bay was destroyed by overbuilding. I'm actually trying to move out to the Dry Creek area. It was an area that I just recent, very recently discovered and loved it, because it used to be what Granite Bay was. It is what Granite Bay was, and to hear that low-income housing and the density that it's going to create, and I feel for all these long-term residents, it's, you will ruin Dry Creek and what it's stood for, because I've witnessed what's happened to Granite Bay, so I implore you, please, don't let low-income housing move into the Dry Creek area. Thank you.
Good morning. Pete Davison. I live off Florence Court. I understand Florence just got upgraded or downgraded. Mr. Pahouli, this week, you used the term, "it's not currently listed," and we were led to believe that it had been not eligible by the testing method that was being used. That's not why I'm here today. I just found out about that from Tuesday's meeting. I brought in a few articles two weeks ago with the Board of Supervisors. I presented this. Megan came and asked me for a copy of this, and also would I send this out to you folks, as well as the Board of Supervisors. The title here, this is a Sunday, March 10th, 2024, "The Big Con in the California Housing Mandate." Very interesting reading here. Talks about setting up a network of 501(c)(3) developers that will have an advantage over private developers on the bounty that is going to be created by this harvest here in California. We have had on our website, and I commend our folks here with their signs, signs do work. Once you put signs up, all of a sudden, you woke these folks up down here in Dry Creek. They mobilized very quickly. North Auburn, Rio Zone oppose. I have both of these on our site. This one is a "California Auditor Releases Scathing Report on RHNA Process." Inflated numbers, inflated numbers. I know our counselor over here spoke about this for a while, and the first time I came to a meeting in November, I heard at the Board of Supervisors, the council speak in such fearful tone about the state's going to come down on us like a ton of bricks. However, I have heard of different cities and even counties that are now mobilizing to fight back and push back, and I would really advocate for Placer County to be one of those areas. Most of those are down in Orange County, which is a red voting district. Placer County is a red voting district. Think about it. Two more articles here. So, out of the March 22, where the California auditor questions the numbers. In 2023, about a year ago, they did an audit, and they found, yes, these numbers were highly inflated, and they took it to the HCD and the RHNA, where these things were created, and they were met with total obstinance. They said, "We're not going to look at it." Yeah. Our numbers are our numbers. They didn't want to look at the numbers. I was just joking out in front. What if you took that to your tax audit? So, those are my numbers, and I'm privileged, so I don't have to abide by them. So, we are being gamed here big time. So, yeah, I'm very interested in keeping Florence off the list as a not-eligible because of what it was. No sewer, no water connections, but yet, it's still out there like a corpse, waiting to be reanimated as needed. So, let's work together, folks. Thank you.
Can you hold on one second? Those lights aren't working, so it doesn't indicate that they only have a minute left. The yellow light is not coming on, so just to let you guys know, it just is going to continue from green to red. I can let you know when you have like 30 seconds left. If you don't mind. Okay. Thanks.
My name is George Brown. I do live in the Dry Creek community. I spent over a decade on the MAC. I was there when we approved Morgan Creek, Morgan Greens, Rio Vineyards, Placer Vineyards. I worked with Bill Santucci on all of those items to try and get those approved. The reason I'm saying that is, we are not anti-growth. We have, we, any compatible use, building or development that came within the community that followed the community plan, we passed. What we didn't pass is incompatible use. And if we, or any of these landowners, would have come to the county prior to this panic and said, "I want to rezone my property for 30 units per acre," they would have been laughed out of planning. There was no chance that any of these would have even had a second, a second meeting with them. The other aspect of this that, beyond that, is, you know, I understand people feeling like their hands are tied, and I think that that's when you really start to fight back, and you go back to the state and say, "This is, we can't implement this." When we passed Placer Vineyards and we passed Rio Vineyards, both of them had their low-income and affordable housing element in place, and I know that to be a fact. Now, where they went, I can't tell you, but I can tell you, they were there. The last thing I'm going to say is, incompatible use for surrounding landowners that have large acres to have 30 units per acre, that's incompatible. To put 30 units per acre across from an elementary school, you're asking for litigation, because something bad is going to happen at some point in time, and it's all going to be pointed out that, in the final analysis, it was the county who allowed the large developers to skirt their requirements, then it got pushed into the rural communities. And to put something there that is so incompatible, the county is asking for problems. And when a child gets hurt or injured because of something that occurred from the multifamily use dwellings there, it's going to come back to the county's litigation. There's no doubt about it. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name's Teresa Powell. I live here in Auburn, and I too am concerned about the statement that Mr. Pahouli made on Tuesday at the Board of Supervisors meeting about the Lot 58 Florence Lane and Highway at the Board of Supervisors meeting about the Lot 58 Florence Lane and Highway 49 is currently off the list. We understood it was off the list, and he has told my husband that there are two lists. And when they take one off, they bring one on from another list. I'd like them to set out both lists together, redline the ones that are off, make whatever blue lines to indicate other things, ones that aren't zoned, ones that are rezoned, so it's, it's, uh, visible to us. I think you're playing a shell game, is what it feels like. You're bamboozling us, and now I see there's property going up for sale over down past Florence again that's going to butt up to Christian Valley. And I'm afraid you're going to get your fingers into that one too and have that rezoned, and you're going to ruin our whole community. We moved here in 1988, and we've been here that long. We moved here because it is a country setting. We wanted to be away from the city. We wanted to be away from the congestion of apartments where we lived down in the Bay Area and then Sacramento. And they just try to destroy everything we've all come here for. It just, it just upsets me. I just, please think about us. Push back on them so that we don't lose our communities. We've worked hard to build our homes there, and we're there for a reason. So please, help us.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nicholas Bolyard. Um, I'm, I'm here to express my concern about the proposed rezoning of Dry Creek Site 9 and 10. The proposed rezoning is directly across the school, the, directly across from an elementary school, as you guys know, and the traffic congestion during the week on our narrow single-lane roads is already an issue for residents. By adding 92 to 138 units on a relatively small parcel of land, there will be a significant increase in traffic in the area. Also, as I'm sure you know, Dry Creek is one of the gems of Placer County and a protected salmon habitat. High-density housing so close to the creek may present dangers to the ecosystem and local environment generally. While I understand that California and Placer County needs more housing units, there are areas that have better access to infrastructure, employment, and public services that are more suited for this kind of development. I've been a Placer County resident my entire life, and it has been a blessing to be a part of such a beautiful and dynamic community that has preserved its strengths while growing thoughtfully. I hope you take an opportunity to reconsider the proposed rezoning of, uh, Zones 9 and 10. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Patty Knifer. And I'm still coming to these meetings because I still think that hearing from the community is going to make a difference. Um, it's been very frustrating, been lots of meetings, and I'm really glad to hear that the Commissioners are looking at other counties and looking at other solutions and seeing what's being done. And kind of everyone's in the same boat that actually came up at the Board of Supervisors meetings, where a couple of supervisors said, "Well, what else is being done? Can the Planning Department research?" Some other options. I need to talk about the housing element, and the high-density spot rezoning project is failing miserably. The research hasn't been done. It was thrown together. So there are obviously many, many parcels that don't fit criteria that would not have been rezoned otherwise by any other property owner, unless this, um, RM 30 zoning is available for the, meant for low-income housing. An example is taking over the 300 extremely-low units that are going to be in eight high-rise apartment buildings in the small neighborhood of Penran. There was a different project proposed for Hope Way, and the county planners said, "Oh, no, it, uh, you, it would be too dense", even though it was a zone commercial. The developer, future developer, was told with a meeting with the county that you cannot build senior housing here because it would be too dense. It was not even a fifth of what's being proposed now. So it did not meet the criteria for individual senior apartments, but it's meeting the criteria for over 300 low-income apartments. That makes absolutely no sense to me. I understand that the proposed RM 30 rezoning to meet the mandated shortfall is a state requirement. However, the plan as outlined does not even require mostly affordable units to be built on the rezoned parcels. The projected RENA numbers of 20 to 30 affordable units per rezoned acres, but that's not going to be built. We're being told that most of those are never going to be built, and that will just cause more other properties to be rezoned to high-density housing. It's just a vicious circle. So the policy will simply override the, um, established general plan and spot rezoning private parcels to properties of high-density apartments in the areas of Placer County, which are inappropriate and cannot support that density. Um, ag lands are being rezoned, properties are being rezoned where there are no services. Placer County should throw out this plan and create a logically planned density zoning for, for our county, and that's what we're imploring you to do. You're the planning commissioners. You have a lot to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
My name is Don LeBolt. I live in the Dry Creek community. I graduated from Roseville High School in 1972. I've seen a lot of good changes here in the community, but unfortunately, the Dry Creek rezoning, uh, is a bad idea, as stated by many people that have spoke here today. And I just got wind of it. Fortunately, there were signs put up. I really didn't realize this was going on till about a week ago. And, uh, I'm just here to support my community, my friends, and say that it's a bad idea. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. That's it. For anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak, and we have anybody online? Okay.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings, Commission. This is Diane Louisa Lessie. I come to you in two capacities, one from Christian Valley Park Community Services District as a director on the board, and a longtime resident of nearly 59 years in this community. So I've seen a lot of historical things, um, take place, um, and a lot of bad planning. But RENA, of course, is one of the worst ideas there is. And how the legislature in California has circumvented, um, charter cities and counties is absolutely egregious. I gave the Board of Supervisors this history lesson and the public. There was when Placer County was a territory prior to California becoming a state. There were five attempts, and it took 30 years to pull together a constitutional convention because territories were being run ripshot over, and they already had a functioning government. That's when charter cities gained their charter and their home rule status, meaning a constitution within a constitution. Placer County is one of those, as is the other counties that you've met with in your, um, schooling. I, you say you're pushing back, but I don't see any real action in terms of co-joining with all of these other charter cities and counties that so fought hard at the beginning of the state's creation to gain and control their destiny. The legislature, this is a constitutional issue. You should be throwing your council resources at it, co-join with these other attorneys, including, uh, Michael Gates in Huntington Beach. He's called out to other counties and cities to co-join with him because they're taking a huge hit right now, but their board has given him the reins to take this all the way to the Supreme Court. That's the kind of pushback. Then also draw up a referendum for veto of the RENA and all of the egregious takeovers and, uh, repeal Prop 19, reinstate Prop 54, all of the things that have dismantled our ability to control our environment. These are the kind of actions that the Board of Supervisors and the Commission need to put forth. And I guarantee you, the whole Placer County constituency would get behind you to tell this Sacramento to go pound sand and take back our sovereignty. They're, uh, running ripshot over our sovereignty that we earned. Furthermore, in terms of rural versus ag, if you go to the HCD website for the publics, I looked it up. On my side of the road in Christian Valley, I'm still rural. Directly across the street from me, according to HCD, has been zoned urban. They have rezoned all of the areas you're all concerned about through the federal census. I would like to know from the Commission, how the heck Placer County lost control over zoning through the feds? With that handled.
Your time is up, um, just to let you know, so I have to move on. But thank you for your comment, and we have noted it.
Caller, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Thompson. I'm currently a resident of Dry Creek. Um, we've only been here about a year, but we've been in Roseville for about 30 years. Um, I want to echo my support for the comments made by the previous speakers. I think the Commissioners, as you were talking about your recent training and the fact that all of these other cities and counties, um, are facing the same challenges, I also encourage you to band together, um, make a plan for an alternative, alternatives, um, to meet these, uh, high-density, um, housing. Um, I think, again, as the others have said, we understand there needs to be, um, housing that's affordable in our community, but as proposed, it makes no sense. And the fact that there really isn't any, um, there, there isn't a, there isn't any, um, real, um, sorry, um, just that there's no guarantee that this housing is going to be built, and you're picking all of these, um, properties throughout the county that really, um, are rural in nature, that don't have the resources, that it would impact the, um, the community as far as the, um, the roads and the, the density of the population. It just really is, it, it just doesn't make sense. So I'm rambling a little bit here, but I really think it is time for Placer County. I know you've stood up, um, against state mandates before. This isn't the time to back down. These are real reasons that you can move forward, look at alternative properties, and hopefully come up with a real resolution, not this smoke and mirrors that you're going to build high-density, low-income housing, but it never happens. That's the problem. The fact that you don't hold new developers accountable, that's a problem. So I urge you also to look at alternatives, to not go forward with the plan as proposed. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Deborah. Is that it?
I see no other commenters.
Okay, um, with that, but there's no more comments about items not on the agenda. I am going to close public comment. I want to thank all of you for, uh, your comments. Uh, we will now move on to the consent agenda. We have one item, which is a summary action of the February 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Would any Commissioners like to remove that item from the consent agenda? Would anybody from the public like to remove that? Seeing none, I would, um, call for, um, pass.
I'll make a motion.
I'll motion.
We have a first.
Second.
And a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Alves?
Yes.
Commissioner Renteen absent. Commissioner Watts?
Obstand.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward absent, and Commissioner Dematte?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, we are now moving on to the first hearing item, which is item number one in, on the agenda. It is an informational item to review the General Plan and Housing Element 2023 Annual Progress Reports. This item will be presented by Principal Planner, Chris Schmidt. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you noted, Chris Schmidt, the Planning Services Division, here to give you an, uh, update on our housing element general plan annual reports. This is, as you noted, an informational item. So we'll go through firstly, uh, the housing element, uh, some background on our housing element. It is a required, uh, portion of our general plan, so the state says you must have a housing element. The state also tells us we have to update that every, uh, eight years. Our current eight-year planning period began in May of 2021, and last through May 15th of 2029. Uh, the housing element is unique, that the state also looks at and approves our housing element, so it looks for compliance with state law. Uh, the housing element must accommodate the county's fair share of the regional housing needs, so we must plan for, of the, uh, a portion of the regional growth that's projected in that eight-year planning period. It also was adopted by the Board of Supervisors on May 11th, 2021, and then certified by the state shortly thereafter. So the state does require us to file an annual report. Uh, it has to be filed by April 1st of each year. We did go to the board on Tuesday, uh, with a lot of discussion, and this, and the board, uh, authorized us to submit that to the state. So what does the annual report cover? It looks at, uh, housing activity in the previous calendar year. So the number of, uh, housing development applications received. We also list any building and construction activity, and it's, uh, for single-family homes or multifamily homes. Uh, we discuss, uh, major development applications submitted. We talk about the progress towards our meeting our RENA numbers for the eight-year period. We also look at the various housing element programs and what the, the status is of each. So more background on the, the RENA numbers. So the state assigns a projected growth number for each, uh, area or metropolitan area of the state. And that SECAG regional allocation was 153,000 units. So the state projects the Sacramento area, the SECAG region, to grow by 150,000 units in the eight-year planning period. And then SECAG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, assigns numbers to each county and city in the region. In the unincorporated Placer County, number was 7,854. So that's the number of units projected the county will build in that time period. So this breaks out the number, the RENA allocation by income category. So you see extremely low, very low, low in the first column. And then the, the fifth column shows what an affordable mortgage or rent payment would be for that household. And it's a family of four, so extremely low could afford $750 mortgage or rent. So that's with extremely low income. For low income, that same family, $2,300. Above moderate, $3,800. That sixth column shows a maximum affordable home price, so above moderate at $429,000. As you can see, or if you know the local housing market, it's very tough to find a house for $429,000 in Placer County. And the last column shows not only our total RENA, uh, RENA numbers, but also how many of each should be built. So extremely low and very low, 2,127 units, 1,282; low income, 1,300; moderate income, and 3,100; above moderate. So this shows our numbers for the past three years. So the housing element started, the planning period started in 2021. As you can see, and others have noted today, that we've had zero very-low-income housing units, uh, built. Low, we have 118 total; moderate, 201; doing really well; and above moderate, a little over 2,000. And you can see we've been averaging about 750 to 800 housing, uh, building permits per year. So overall, uh, we're meeting 29.7% of our projected, uh, growth. For the remaining, uh, five years of the cycle, there's, uh, unbuilt 5,500 units. For the remaining, uh, five years of the cycle, there's, uh, unbuilt fifty-five hundred units. Let's talk about the accessory dwelling units, because many of our low-income or, or reported low-income units are accessory dwelling units. You know these as granny flats, or accessory apartments, or guest units. It can be contained within a house or detached unit. Uh, it's always, it's typically located on a single-family home lot. And for our planning period, we assumed about eighty-six ADUs built per year. And we also have a housing element policy that says any ADU under seven hundred fifty square feet is considered affordable by design. So you can see in the low-income category, we've had a hundred fifty-two ADUs that count towards our RENA numbers. So those are mostly market rate. So if someone in North Auburn decides to build an ADU, if it's five hundred, six hundred square feet, we can count it as low income. We do have some subdivisions that are building ADUs to meet their affordable housing obligation, or they're ten percent affordable. These are also counted, um, as low income. So moderate income are your larger ADUs, seven hundred fifty to twelve hundred square feet. Two hundred thirty-two, two hundred thirty-two of those built, um, in the last three years. So a total of three hundred eighty-five. We're averaging about a hundred to a hundred thirty ADUs per year. So more than we expected, and helping us meet our RENA numbers.
So, Chris? These are, uh, actual build. Now, there's been a lot of, uh, recently, a lot of approvals of subdivisions included for housing that haven't been built. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we don't have those numbers?
Correct. So they're, they're not counted yet. So there's two subdivisions that are building the ADUs to meet their obligations. That's, uh, White Hawk Two in Granite Bay, and then the Brady Vineyard subdivision in Dry Creek. So as we're counting ADUs as affordable, the, the state HCD made us do a program. It's HE thirty, that we have to monitor whether the ADUs are really serving their purpose. Are they being used as affordable housing? So the housing unit at the CEO's office is doing a survey and, um, a study to see who's, who's building these, who's occupying, are they affordable? So that report will be coming to, uh, the board sometime this summer. We'll be supplying that, um, report to HCD in our next annual report.
Chris, does that only count the ones that are under seven hundred fifty square feet?
It'll count all ADUs.
Okay.
So our annual progress report also talks about our forty-nine programs that are in the housing element. Uh, of the forty-nine, twenty-one are ongoing. So those are usually policies that are continuously implemented. An example of that may be given priority of, to affordable housing projects when we're, uh, doing entitlements and, uh, review. Uh, twelve of the programs have been completed so far. We're currently working on three of those, additional programs. Uh, there's thirteen programs that we have not yet started, but we have scheduled to be completed in the next five years. So I talked about some of the ongoing, uh, programs. HE one, which we've talked about today, uh, we do have the May fifteenth deadline to, to do the rezone program. HC six is updating our land development manual to make sure our development standards are keeping with, you know, current trends and aren't impeding construction of affordable housing, so that land development manual is underway. HE nine was to expand water and sewer infrastructure in the Sunset area. We do have, you can see the bottom right-hand, uh, picture, there is, uh, backbone sewer work going on today in the Placer Ranch, uh, area, and also extending into the Sunset area. Uh, HE eleven sewer infrastructure in North Auburn. We do have a, a capacity, uh, sewer capacity project that's out to bid. It's going to be trunk line along Highway forty-nine to, uh, free up some units in the North Auburn area. HE thirteen, county fee structure update that's currently underway. HE twenty-six is actually, is to propose and to get approved an affordable and workforce housing project in Tahoe City. It's called Dollar Creek. That project is currently in pre-planning. The HE thirty, which I just mentioned, we have to monitor ADU affordability. If the ADUs are really meeting their intended purpose, or can we really count them as low-income, uh, units? Uh, HE thirty-eight, uh, TRPA code, code changes to help, uh, or at least spur or make it easier to build housing in the Tahoe Basin. Uh, it says under review, but TRPA did approve our package of amendments in late February. And then HE forty-two, which has been discussed at the Planning Commission, uh, last year. We still need to bring that back to the Board of Supervisors for approval, hoping to do that sometime this summer. Two of the programs, or one program, we anticipate, at least the planning department anticipates starting this year, is HE thirty-four, to allow for residential development on, uh, religious properties. This actually was in our housing element, but the state did pass a law last year that this is going to be required statewide. So we'll be catching up with the state law, which goes into effect July first. And then one non-housing element program, which the planning director talked about, uh, earlier, uh, doing a Sunset Area Plan Amendment Package, and that'll include the residential rezoning for the Cincinnati Avenue County properties. Hope to get that completed at the same time in May with the rezone program. Then want to talk about some affordable housing, uh, projects that are in the pipeline. So either currently in review, or we know they're coming soon. The Sabre City Project, which is, um, off of PFP Road in the Dry Creek area. That project is currently going, uh, through improvement plan review. They hope to start work later this year. That's a Housing Trust Placer project. So forty-four units there. Uh, Placer Creek would be the first affordable housing project in the Placer Vineyards development. That'll be an apartment project. That's a part of the Lenar Heritage Project. So that's in for pre-development. Hope Way, which we've heard about, also, uh, Penrind, two hundred forty units. It's a Housing Trust Placer project. They've submitted their application for that. Uh, Dollar Creek, the Tahoe City project I just talked about. And then there is a potential project in North Auburn, uh, that's in the conceptual stage. Which one?
That's a new one. That wasn't the, 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 no housing.
This is actually a mistake and shouldn't be on there because it's, it's just an idea at this stage. So we really shouldn't count that. So it's about five hundred forty units in the, in the pipeline.
Where is it? What?
It's on the DeWitt campus, is what they're looking at. So also, part of, uh, a requirement is to submit to the state and update on our general plan implementation. So that's actually in government code. We have to submit that to the State Office of Planning and Research and also HCD. So our annual report, there is a requirement, the state tells us what we must report on. We have to ensure that we're complying with California general plan law and general plan guidelines. We have to include a, an update on our implementation measures and what the status is of each. We have to summarize our, any goals, policies, or objectives or standards that we've changed in the general plan over the past year. We talk about significant planning activities, which could be, you know, you know, general plan update, of course, any community plan updates, zoning text amendments. And then also talk about, uh, major projects that have been approved, and also projects that we're currently, uh, reviewing. We did have one general plan amendment that Planning Commission, uh, was involved with last year, and that was for the Creekview Ranch project in Dry Creek. And the general plan, for amendments with that, was for land use changes, and then also some, uh, buffering standard changes for residential industrial buffer whiffs. And there is no action requested, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission?
I do.
Please go ahead.
Hey, Chris.
Hi.
You were talking about, uh, anything that we've changed or will be changing in the general plan needs to go in these updates. So I just have some process questions, then. What process for, we have the ordinance for affordable housing, ten percent of anything over a hundred in development. But in that ordinance, it also says you can pay in lieu fees or give a different piece of land or something. What is the process change for changing an ordinance? So if we want housing, we can only have housing and not have those other options? That might be a Clayton question, sorry.
Probably a Clayton question. There, there is a policy in the housing element about requiring the ten percent affordable for the larger projects. But if the board wants to change that, I think it's a board discretion, so if they want to do twenty percent?
Or the board would, could change the ordinance to say only housing, not in lieu fees and not swap?
That's exactly it. And that, for the record, Clayton Cook, uh, counsel for the Planning Commission. Yes, so the affordable housing ordinance is in our county code. So much like any other change to the county code, uh, that could be done at the board level.
And then my other process question was about RM twenty-thirty. If RM twenty-thirty, the new zoning code, goes into the general plan, that would supersede all the community plans, right? Correct?
It, it would. It is currently drafted, um, and a, a copy of that was provided, uh, during our last meetings. But as it's currently drafted, it would supersede, uh, the community plans.
Since it's under the draft stage, when does HCD approve that? And since we drafted it, we being the county, it, what, there was some discussion by the supervisors about excluding rez-ag under that designation. How does that work? What's the process, is my question?
The properties would be rezoned from, uh, rez-ag to the RM thirty. So, uh, that, that would not present any conflict, uh, once they are, once they are rezoned.
But since the, I, I, my, I guess my process question is, since it's in the draft stage and we drafted it, when does it get approved by HCD, and then it's in, it's codified?
It, it won't be approved by HCD. It will be approved by the Board of Supervisors.
So if the Board of Supervisors chose to take out those other uses besides housing, that's a board option?
That, that's correct.
Okay. And then, um, another, uh, process question, because we're doing updates. HCD certified our plan when we submitted it. What is the process for decertifying a certified plan? And has that been challenged? Because if we have the cycle, what is the point of certification at all? If they can constantly come back and say, well, we had a lawsuit, there were some outcomes in this lawsuit. Now you have to go back again and redo parts of your plan. So can they come back constantly every year in this eight-year cycle and say, we're going to decertify if you don't do this. We're going to decertify if you don't do that?
Yeah. So by statute, HCD has the authority to approve our housing element portion of our general plan. Um, and with that authority to approve it, they also, by statute, have the authority to rescind that approval at any time if they determine that we are no longer complying with the requirements that we had identified in the housing element that they had approved. So, um, when it comes to how often that can occur, it's really at HCD's discretion, but it would need to be sparked by a county action that would be inconsistent with the housing element that's already approved by HCD.
Okay. And then one last process question. The change control log, I think that I asked for, I know that I asked for, uh, last meeting, for the properties that are coming on and off and under consideration, non-under consideration. What, where is that?
We, we'll provide that with your April twenty-fifth report package.
Okay. That was it for me.
Anybody else? Questions? Um, couple of questions. For those who live, live out in the Dry Creek area and they're ag-residential, some of them had mentioned that they already have ADUs on them. Can those be added to that list of ADUs going forward that we have in the program already? Or once it's already built, it's not in it, it doesn't count?
Yeah. We captured it at building permit stage. So it's permitted units. So if it's built in the last three years, it's on, it's counted in this list?
It is.
Built ten years ago, we, we don't count it.
So only from the back three years. Also, um, you said that they're doing, research to see if these affordable housing ADUs are being used for affordable housing. How, what is the threshold of it being used for affordable housing? How do we determine if it's grandma who can only afford, and she's on a fixed income, that's her affordable housing? Or their kid who works in ag or whatever is maxed out at twenty dollars an hour? How do we, how does the county determine that?
I don't know the methodology they're using, but they are going to capture, so okay, who's occupying the unit? And are they paying rent? So if it's a third party, it's not a family member, you're collecting rent, we can determine affordability by the rent levels that were shown in that table. If it's a family member, I'm not sure if they're going to put, which bucket they're going to put those in. But I think the end result, or one of the conclusions of those, that studies maybe, is if it's a family member renting it, it is serving a purpose because it's someone who's not renting another unit out in the community. So it is, serves as housing, and even if they're not paying rent, it, it's, it's a good thing. If it's being used as a she shed or a media room, that's not what is ADUs.
No, I understand. Somebody has to be living there. Right.
But I think the majority, from what the numbers I've seen, and I haven't looked at the survey results, a lot of them are being used by family members. So it's your boomerang kids, your in-laws, et cetera.
So you could look at the income of those individuals living in that, and if they themselves were considered under the threshold of income, they could count?
The survey does ask, if you're renting it, what is the income? And it's, it's voluntary. It's not like, it's not a mandatory that you have to tell us what you're doing with your living space.
Commissioners, if I could, just to add on to the discussion, um, I know we've mentioned it before at, at your meetings, but, uh, the wording of HE thirty does include that, uh, following the survey, if the county cannot prove up that these units are being used as lower-income units, the county is required to rezone additional properties to, to meet whatever shortfall would be, would be, uh, considered. I believe we have roughly three hu, uh, three hundred ninety, close to four hundred units included currently in our housing element, um, attributed to ADU production. And so again, if, if the result of the survey is that we can't prove out that that number is going to be, uh, built and rented to lower-income individuals, we will have to, uh, rezone additional properties to make that shortfall.
Yeah. And if I could just provide just a little more explanation for that. So our housing element has a program in it that, uh, basically considers ADU as low income in that category. Um, it's fairly unique. That's not a program, uh, that is included in a lot of other housing elements within the state. Um, ADUs are widely accepted to be moderate, to fulfill that moderate housing level requirement. But the low-income one is, is one that there is some question about. And the reason, and there was some que, because there was some question about whether or not ADUs under seven hundred and fifty square feet can really fulfill that low-income housing category. HCD required in our housing element that since we had that program, they wanted a check to make sure that in fact, that it was meeting that number. So that's what you're seeing, and that's what the report will come forward as, basically, our verification that those are fulfilling that low-income number. Ultimately, if, if it, the numbers and the, the evaluation doesn't prove out that it, we are fulfilling low income by ADUs under seven hundred and fifty square feet, then we would have to rezone more properties.
So your methodology, methodology and approach for doing that survey is critical, because we're not required, that, we can't require our homeowner to tell us, like you had said, what they're using it for. So if we come back with like ten percent response rate, the methodology and approach have to be really strong, knocking on doors, making phone calls, that kind of thing. So we get our numbers up if they are in fact used for low income.
Right.
Can we make that public? Because I would like to read it and see what it says. Because are we educating those folks, this is voluntary for them to submit that information?
If you, if you have, excuse me, public comment is closed. I can't have anybody interrupting. If you would like to have that question answered, please submit it to us, and we will get that back to you. But I can't have everybody shouting out at our staff. So, and we still have public comment to come on this agenda item, so you can talk then. Yeah, you're welcome. Sorry, go ahead. Anybody else? Nothing? Um, I'm, 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 I'm. Yeah, we can move on then. So if there's nothing else that we can, um, questions for staff, we can move on to public comment. So if you would like to ask that question, now you have three minutes.
Thank you, and I apologize. I'm.
No, you can come up to the podium, please.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm new to all this.
Me too.
And I'm just now, uh, new to the community. I actually.
Can you state your name for the record, please? And you all have three minutes to talk. The, either, the tall one.
Yeah, my name is Mona Susu, and, uh, I'm new to the Dry Creek area. I'm really not very well-educated, and I'm just learning as I go. And I'm participating with the rezoning as well and supporting the community. I live in Morgan Creek. I'm new. I've heard a lot of wonderful residents talking about how long they've lived here. I have to be honest, I've only been here since November, but I care just as, I care also, probably not as much as everybody else, because I don't have the history here, but I'm moved by everything that's been taking place, and I'm trying to support as much as I can. I'm, the, the fact that I am new, I do apologize for interrupting, uh, uh, the, the session. Um, so having said that, I would love to just learn a little bit more about these ADUs. Since they are critical in meeting these numbers, if we can, uh, have some kind of, um, uh, dissemination of information on what these surveys look like. You didn't seem to have that much information for us. But if we were more aware of what they are, what it states, and can they really educate the homeowner that how relevant and important it is for them to complete this information, uh, that these numbers can go towards. that these numbers can go towards these things. Also, if there's an opportunity for other folks to have an opportunity to build ADUs, or if they can't afford it, to convert what they have into an ADU to be counted, and if there's a way to educate us on how to be able to do that, living in Morgue Creek, we probably won't be able to because of HOA, but if there's an opportunity there, I would like to learn. I think educating us as much as possible would be helpful, because a lot of us maybe don't have that information, but we may have the resource to be able to do it, but gathering and learning that information might be helpful to help us work with you in getting more ADUs to support these numbers. I'm with the folks here. I don't want any of this stuff in our backyard, and I'm sure everyone is probably saying the same thing. What isn't being talked about is, this is not discounting low income. I've been, I've been successful in my career, thank God, but I've been out of a job for six months. I actually qualify probably now for low income, which I won't. I don't want that in my backyard still, because with low income brings a certain kind of culture, and I'm sorry, I have to be honest with it, I don't want that in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Little Rick Reidman. Just had a question for Director Pahuli. You mentioned at the MAC meeting last week, that we had already reached our maximum ADUs that we could count. And I've tried to find some type of documentation somewhere that says you can only count X number of ADUs, and I haven't been able to locate that. Is it possible to find out where that number is, and how we come to it?
You just, if you, you have three minutes to talk, and so what we'll do afterwards is, we'll gather all your questions, and we'll answer them at the end.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
You're welcome, Rick. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Pete Davison, Florence Lane. One of the items that I spoke of earlier, which does pertain to this, since we're talking about needs allocation, I'm really questioning, have we ever done an audit ourselves here for Placer County on our needs? Did we question the numbers that were assigned to us? That was the articles, I sent those three to Megan while I was listening to the other things conducted. She's acknowledging that she does have them. I would be very interested, have we done, has Placer County, has the Planning Commission, has the Board of Supervisors authorized or instructed the council or the planning director to do an audit, to see if our numbers are indeed fair and valid, based on our population growth? That is a question I do have. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Teresa Powell, North Auburn. On that chart about the allocation needs and the wage income, they say even the maximum affordable home price for a $715 affordable mortgage payment, $94,162 for a maximum affordable home price, and even the upper end for the above-moderate income affordable mortgage rent payment, $3,835 for a maximum affordable home price of $429,663. I've been coming to these meetings for a while, and the price that was told per door, per door, on these 20, 30-unit things, $667,000, that's what you told us, who's going to pick up the tab for the difference between that $400,000 at the top end, and the $92,000, or whatever it was I read, for the lower end? $667,000 for one door in an apartment, and you're not even recouping that in these charts that are up there? It doesn't make sense to me, and I feel like my tax bill's going up, and I'm not going to be able to afford to live in my home. So what's up with that? Thanks.
George Brown, Dry Creek. Just a quick question. It's come to my attention that I, that one of the landowners in the group has decided they want to reneg on their commitment to the high density, and is apparently being told they cannot do that. And I'm curious, because that sounds an awful lot like eminent domain. If the county's forcing these landowners hand, they're essentially taking their property. So I'm curious to find out what the obligation is for those particular landowners who may want to change their mind.
I have one question. What parcel are you talking about?
I'd rather not speak to that at the moment, but it's someone I've had a conversation-
All right, no worries. Thank you.
Patty Nifer. I understand the comments are specifically about the progress report and not specific parcels, but I am going to take one small liberty. The comment on the report itself is that the parcels and the projects that are included in the housing allocation report that's being submitted to the state for approval include unapproved parcels, unapproved projects. And it hems you in. They haven't been rezoned yet, they're not allowed projects, as stated. But if you go further on into the report, the individual parcels, the individual housing units are listed. And so my comment is on a report like this, once you start listing them, it puts a framework around what's being proposed, and it's harder to change, and say, no, these didn't get approved, or these got changed. So I think the report is a little deceptive, because it includes parcels that really are not vetted yet. And the liberty I wanted to take is, I did look into the tax billing for low-income housing, nonprofit, I've talked about this before, welfare tax exemption. And the Hope Lane projects, the 240 units, would not be paying any property taxes, so you're losing over $500,000 in property taxes going into the community. So no fire, no bonds for the schools, all of that is exempt. There's one other project that I compared it to in Placer County, it's an affordable housing, small unit project, I got the tax returns, and the county zeros out the bill for the property and for the land. So just mosquito abatement and sewer is paid, but there are zero taxes, including voter-approved bonds, that are going back into the community to support the local fire department, to support the schools, and that's a big issue. Thank you.
Commenter, unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yes, Commissioner, this is Diane Lysel-Lessie, from Christian Valley Park Community Services District, and longtime resident. I, some of my questions were already asked, but I think what I would like to propose then is the piece about Cindy Gustafson, Tuesday's board meeting, had asked for possible other scenarios and suggestions. And I made one in terms of possible tiny home community setups, where you could still get probably 20 tiny homes per acre, but set it up in a co-op, where it's not incorporated, where these tiny homes wouldn't be rented out of their, what was, is going on right now with mobile home parks. My mother was one of those. Furthermore, and I think when you give a tiny house community the opportunity to actually maybe have a common gardening space and different things, have their own board, similar to an HOA, so on and so forth, they have investment in their surroundings, and a say in their environment. And that gets taken away in these high densities. And then I'm going to close with the fact that with this suggestion that's going to HCD right now, it's not going to serve all of the workforce that's making well under $50,000 a year. You're going to have to flip it, where it's 90% low to extremely low income, and only 10%, and don't, and remove the developers' buyouts. Because we're always going to be chasing the numbers in terms of whatever the density, so on and so forth, is going to happen. So with that, I yield, I appreciate it. And I would like to also know how HCD is getting to randomly do overlay zoning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commenter, unmute your mic and give your comments.
This is for me?
Yeah, Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Gary Flanagan, Granite Bay. I'd like the board to ask Chris regarding the projects that he was talking about that are in progress. Are there any of those projects where the developer has applied for in lieu fees, so that they will not have to build affordable housing? That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. That's it, Kelsey. Okay. Seeing nobody else, I will close public comment, and have the staff respond to our questions, your questions. Thank you.
I'll actually start here. So I did want to, did want to note that, you know, this item before you today is a report on the annual report on progress being met for our general plan and the housing element in that report to the state. It is not an item on the rezon program, and, but however, with the comments that were made, and in an effort to be responsive to those questions that were brought up, I did want to provide a couple of responses. The first is, as it relates to the housing unit from the CEO's office, the annual, or the ADU report, they will be submitting that directly to the state. However, we will work on getting that information over to the Planning Commission, and also to the board. So we'll work with that unit in getting that information. There was a question that was brought up by a commenter about the housing element and accessory dwelling units within the housing element. I did mention at a, at the Dry, or at the West Placer MAC meeting, that in crafting our housing element, we did work with HCD to maximize the amount of units that we could count as part of our ADU program. As County Council mentioned earlier, that is not a typical, a typical inclusion into the housing element, to be able to take, or take into account and credit for accessory dwelling units at a low-income level. So even though we believed that we would produce more than the roughly 400 ADU units, and as Mr. Schmidt mentioned, we are on track to produce that number. In terms of how many we were able to count, we, in negotiations with HCD, believe that we maxed out the number that we would be able to count. There were questions about, about the RENA numbers themselves, the regional housing needs assessment and allocation. That process is, as we've mentioned on prior occasions, is generated by the state, that those numbers, those regional development numbers are provided to SECOG, our Council of Governments, and then those are apportioned out to individual jurisdictions in preparation of their housing elements. At the time that those RENA numbers were provided to the county, there would have been conversations about the appropriateness of the numbers, and working collaboratively with SECOG to come to numbers that were appropriate for our jurisdiction. And so that would have happened as part of the preparation of the 2021 through 2029 housing element.
Can you just tell them the counties that are in SECOG? I don't think people understand what SECOG is.
Yeah, SECOG is the six-county, six-county region. It includes Placer, El Dorado, Sacramento, Yolo, Sutter, and Yuba. I believe those are the six counties. I did want to respond to the question about landowners changing their mind through the RENA process. At the February 13th Board of Supervisors meeting, the board took action to approve a list of 19 proposed rezon sites for further consideration. At that time, those 19 property owners had indicated their interest in participating in the rezon. There have been, I'm aware of a couple of property owners that have indicated to us that they've changed their mind. Our response to those property owners is that the final decision on the rezoning will occur at the Board of Supervisors meeting, following a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And so, as we've talked about on other occasions, the county, and the county does have the authority to, does have land use authority to rezone properties. However, the board has indicated on multiple occasions that their desire is to complete this rezoning effort with voluntary participation. And so that information, their desire not to participate in the program, will be provided to the Planning Commission on April 25, and a final decision will be made by the board on May 21.
So we can recommend it to be taken up?
I do also want to note that the comment about tiny homes, and tiny homes being, tiny homes being allowed within that 20 to 30-unit, or per acre zone, is something that we will bring back when we take this package before the Planning Commission and the board. As drafted in the RM 30 district, that type of development would be allowed. So I'll note that now, but we can have further discussions when this item is brought before the Planning Commission. And with that, maybe I'll hand it over to Chris, to Mr. Schmidt, to respond to the question about the projects that were shown, and whether or not any of them have been contemplated to use in lieu fees.
There are a few more questions on my list. The ADU report that the housing units bring it forward to the board, that will be a public document, publicly accessible in draft form, and when it goes to the Board of Supervisors. The comment about ADUs being important, the county agrees that ADUs do serve a significant role in providing housing for our residents. We do have an ADU website on the county website, page dedicated to ADUs. We also have a series of pre-built approved plans, so we do have four plans that the public can utilize, which means you don't have to pay an architect, it's pre-approved very quickly, you can get your building permits, and that's also on our website. Affordable housing units, the cost to build versus affordable rent, that's the dilemma in a lot of these affordable housing projects. I don't know what the per-unit cost is. She quoted $600,000, it's probably about that much. And of course, these folks cannot pay what it costs to build, so there always is that gap, and that's filled with either tax credits, county contributions, or grant money from the state or federal levels. The projects listed, I believe Gary was talking about the four or five affordable housing projects listed in the presentation, those are all affordable, so there is no in lieu fee, they are building housing. If he was referring to the projects listed in the annual report that we're currently reviewing, that's TBD. If they are over 100 units, they are required to build affordable housing on site. If they're smaller projects, under 100 units, they are allowed to do the in lieu fee. Patty's comment about the pending projects in the annual report that we're reviewing, they may need rezoning, so they are pending, so they're by no means approved, and there's no certainty that the site would get rezoned if they need to be rezoned for their project. That's all the questions I have listed that weren't answered.
Yeah, you know, it kind of seems like the elephant in the room is the fact that the county is focusing it on kind of rural properties, or high-density. And so, you know, I understand that the state is mandating this, so somehow, I guess the county is, I don't know if we have more numbers than some of the cities or not, but at any rate, I guess I'm kind of questioning, you know, how we address that question, because it seems like it's, you know, I can see where people are concerned, if you have a rural property that's going to be high-density, then there's a little ambiguity there, so. I don't know if you can really address it, but that's going to be something that ultimately the supervisors are going to have to address.
Yeah, Commissioner Johnson, just to, just to- Yeah, Commissioner Johnson, just to, just to interject here. Staff will, as part of our, is part of the package that will be brought before you on the 25th. We will include quite a bit of information related to the question that you're asking. And so when we do have the hearing on the rezon program, we will, we will address that question.
Okay, thank you.
Will you make sure you add the survey information for the ADUs and the process by which a draft zoning, whatever, RM 30 becomes formalized? Because if it's still a draft, and we still have those 32 other, 31 other options besides housing, I just want to understand the process better.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just a note about the regional housing allocation. So we were assigned 7,800 units for the eight-year planning period. You can see we're averaging about 800 a year. So over the eight years, 6,400 units. They were projecting 7,800, so it's not very far off. Now, how they allocate the very low, low, moderate, above moderate, I would say those are aspirational numbers, but we are held to those numbers. So the goal is 2,100 of those units because there is such a great need out there. And they also look at, you know, affordable levels of housing in Placer County and how unaffordable it is, and that's how they raise that number. So there really is a need for 2,100 very low units because there is such a need for workforce or attainable housing in Placer County. As you can see, above moderate, 2,000 units, we're doing that about every three years. So we're really good at the above moderate, very typical to produce very low, but that is the goal. Or that's the RENA number given to us is the 2,100 very low units. For comparison, I think we just looked at sick county, we were in the back of the room. Their RENA number is 20,000 units over the planning period, so much higher. And I think their very low number was 8,000 was their goal? So 8,000 of 20,000 was their very low number. So it's, they're high numbers across the board in the region because the housing need is great.
Is very high. No, I, I see it. I mean, talking to people everywhere. They do commute to come in here because they can't afford to live here, so. I'm sure the audit would show that there, those numbers are pretty accurate of what's needed here in Placer County. Thinking, you know, after going to Legis Cities, and this is now a state problem, and all these other communities are fighting back. What's to say if we stepped into that game too and said, hey, look, this is not obtainable at this time, along with the other 58 counties that are in this state that are saying the same thing to the state, or the guys over there in that little white house that, hey, we need more time. You guys are shoving us down our throat, and we're not going to put up with it. Along with what we heard down there, that it seems everybody's trying to do the same thing. Like they're, like I said before, they're in the same boat as we are, and they're fighting for us, and what if we? I know the extension ask is you have to have 75% in. If we don't have that 75% in, you know, are the consequences going to be really that bad? Are they going to shut down the whole entire state because the whole entire state said, no, thank you right now? I mean, when does push come to shove and they finally sit back and go, okay, wait, we screwed up? So I guess, maybe just comments, it probably can't be answered, obviously. But I did have a question like asked before on SB 10 that allows minimum of 10 units per acre if it's close to a freeway ingress and egress. Will that be allowed in our housing element to say if a landowner is right next to the freeway, such as, you know, maybe Hope Lane or Penrin or somewhere off 80 or 65 wants to do that? Can we, will we allow that to happen? And will that supersede SB 330?
I did, I did look into this before. SB 10 authorizes local government to institute an ordinance that would allow that kind of density. It's not a mandatory requirement. That increased density would be in a transit-rich area or an urban infill site. We don't have an ordinance that's set up like that, so there would not be a, an issue on our county in terms of superseding the RENA rezon program.
So we could not do that, or we could do that? If it's a high, if it's, if there's a freeway access in the county, I, I understand that it's a city deal, but if it's in the county and we have access, because our roads, because we're a big county and our roads run through our counties, and we're trying to put these houses in our counties, not our cities, it's a different subject. Would that, could we implement that, even though we don't have that ordinance? Or does the board have to go adopt an ordinance, or, and can it be done in the general plan? Or can it be done before May 15th to say, you know, it may not reach our numbers, I understand that. But if it's an option, can we have that audible to call?
So that option allows for essentially upzoning of those properties in those areas? That would operate, I guess, independently from our RENA number obligation that we need to comply with. So you could cer, the county could certainly institute an ordinance that would rezon in those, in those transit-oriented areas. But you still have to meet the RENA rezon number. So you would be upzoning in those areas, and I guess it would still be operating independently. We would still need to be rezoning certain properties.
I mean insufficient of what our numbers would be.
Right.
I guess, and that brings it back to, if the whole state is that way, what is those little people in the White House going to do if the whole state doesn't comply? I think it's shut us all down. I mean, I mean, it's a hypothetical, I understand, but.
Yeah.
I think it's a question that the citizens are looking to be asked as well because we're just their voice, so.
I did touch on this a bit at the board meeting.
40% counties are not certified?
But the Attorney General's Office has become active about this in the past two years. They've initiated a strike force to go after local authorities that do not comply with their RENA numbers.
Do they have the resources to take on 40% of the state, I guess, is the question?
Yeah, so, all right. Well, thank you. I, I'm, thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Any other comments and, not, then I'll conclude that informational item. We have no vote on it, and we'll move on to the next item.
Chris, I wanted to thank you for answering my questions on Sunday. I will never ask you questions on Sunday ever again. I didn't expect an answer on the weekend.
Surprise.
I should have qualified that, but thank you.
Shows you a beer. The next hearing item is listed as item number two on the agenda, and is a general plan constituent, I can't even talk today. Determination for the Placer Union School. This item will be presented by supervising planner Annie Marie Partey. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, planning commissioners. Again, I'm Anne Marie Novotny. I'm the supervising planner with the SEJA Planning Services Division. On February 20th, 2024, Placer County received a letter from the Placer Union High School District requesting a termination regarding the disposition of real property and its conformity with the county's approved general plan. The letter is attached to the staff report as attachment A. This request was made pursuant to Government Code Section 65402, which states that real property cannot be disposed of until the location, purpose, and extent of the disposition is submitted to and reported upon by the local planning agency as to conformity with the agency's adopted general plan. The planning agency is required to provide its report to conformity with the adopted general plan within 40 days of receipt of the notification. If a report is not provided, then the action taken is deemed to be in conformity with the general plan. The written report is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15378 and Public Resources Code Section 21151.2. The property that the district intends to dispose of is located east of State Route 49, west of the Christian Valley subdivision, and south of Gold Hill Canal. It is approximately 91 acres of unimproved land on Assessor's Parcel Number APN 076-120-048-000, 60-foot wide easement located on APNs 076-120-006 and -007 by three zeros. There's a location map attached to the staff report as attachment B. The subject site, referred to as the 49 Land Property, is located within the Auburn Bowman Community Plan and is designated as riparian drainage and agricultural 10 to 80 acre minimum. The plan expects farming, grazing, and open space uses to continue in the agricultural designation. The riparian drainage use designation identifies areas along streams, creeks, and riparian corridors, reflects the 100-year floodplain. A canal and perennial stream are mapped along the northern portion of the parcel. Any development on the parcel would have to respect that sensitive habitats are present that require special attention when planning for development. The subject site is zoned farm and farm combining flood hazard, along with combining minimum building site of 20 acres. Subsequent property owners would be limited to land uses allowed within the farm zone, which are listed in zoning ordinance section 17.10.010, which is attached to the staff report as attachment C. The land surrounding the 49 Land Property is zoned agricultural, 10 to 80 acre minimum to the north, south, and west. No development falling on the corresponding neighboring parcels aside from Interstate 80 to the west. Parcels to the east are designated rural residential, 2.3 to 4.6 acres, and have been developed mostly as one-acre parcels with single-family residences with land, accessory land uses. A variety of land uses could be pursued that would be in harmony with the existing development of the area. All future development would need to be in accordance with the zoning ordinance, general plan, and Auburn Bowman Community Plan. The requested action is the sale of real property, and since there is no development planned at this time, planning staff has concluded that the action is consistent with the Placer County general plan. Planning staff recommends that the planning commission take the following action. A, find the disposal of the proposed subject site by the Placer Union High School District, consistent with the applicable policies of the Placer County general plan, Auburn Bowman Community Plan, and the Placer County zoning ordinance. And B, determine the proposed action is not a project subject to CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Sections 15378 and Public Resources Code Section 21151.2, since it is an administrative report that will not result in a potentially significant physical impact on the environment. So this concludes my presentation on this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Just a process question. Sometimes when school districts want to dispose of some properties that they own, they, before they offer to the public, do they have to offer it to other agencies, or when does that requirement come into play?
Yes, that's part of the letter that was attached, I believe, in there. They, they did include, they did send it out to several agencies, including Placer County, giving us the opportunity to purchase the, the property. It's not in the county's interest to purchase this property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions for me. Thank you. I will now open it to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this item?
Me again. Teresa Powell. That's the one I brought up earlier that I was concerned about because I know they're grabbing and growling and taking all of our rural properties from us. And if the county's not going to buy it, or if a developer buys it, now, are you going to rezone that too? It butts right up to the community. I saw the property line on that attachment B, and a house right at Kenneth is right there, right to the border of that property. So if they start building on there, you start rezoning, you start putting your big ugly complexes up there that don't even fit the community and make it an eyesore. Here, we're going to be back here crying at the stand again because you're just ruining our way of life. So I want to make sure you don't have your eyes set on that too, to get a developer in there to get that. And plus, you got to make sure that you don't do those in lieu fees. We're 2,000 and something behind. And I don't want that on that property. It's a conservancy property between Florence and that lot. And I thought the whole lot was conservancy, but please, don't let them do that to us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Pete Davison. One of the issues that we had regarding Florence Lane, and we are a neighbor of this property too that was just discussed, was to encourage me to actually seek out the owner of the, the parcel. And I did, and we had some emails, and we, we had to get over a few prejudices on both sides here and learn a little bit about each other. And I said, I, I'm very hesitant to approach anybody. I'm a free enterprise guy. I don't like telling people what to do with their property. I said, but, yeah, I live here. You live on the other side of town, and you realize what this is going to look like here in our community. So one of the things he mentioned to me, and Mr. Pohley, this is probably not the first time you've heard this, is I have 80 acres adjoining the county jail right over here on Atwood. He said, I have no idea why they didn't talk to me about that instead of that Florence Lane property, which is kind of a, it's been a sore thumb for him. He hasn't been able to get any action on it for over 20 years. And I actually had a further conversation with him, and he said, I, I have talked with them, and I'm willing to split it. They've been a little bit unreasonable on what they want to do for, who's going to pick up the tab on sewer connection? The sewer connection up on Florence Lane, if you're familiar with that in 49, you're going to have to go a long way to connect to that. I think that was advertised on the site that we saw that the county provided as, oh, we'll hook that into, we'll hook that into Christian Valley. And I said, you're not going to hook that into Christian Valley. Those folks had Cindy Gustafson come out, and they said, here's why you can't access that. Apparently, that was not done on the EIR. And that's what a lot of that goes to. And I just had a further question for the council. There are, and Mr. Demattei, I really appreciate the spirit in which you were talking about some pushback here. I mean, we need to really collect ourselves and become part of these areas in California that are saying, no, this, your, your numbers aren't correct. You're shoving them down our throat. Mr. Pohley earlier said, well, we take our numbers from SECOG. Okay, and, I was waiting for the and, didn't get any and. SECOG says, these are the numbers, we'll split them up with the six, six counties, and, and that's it. You read those articles, you're going to find out that those numbers weren't correct. And I think we have a responsibility to our taxpayers here in Placer County to review that. If we have to take, do our own audit, then we have to do our own audit, but maybe not be part of SECOG, at least as it pertains to this. Not be so friendly and just accept what we are doing. Because when this was introduced, when Gavin Newsom started with this, he so overshot what was needed for RHNA. Then they had to redo it, and it ended up being less than half of what Newsom originally said, less than half. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Would anybody else like to comment on this? Is there anybody online, Kelsey?
Commenter, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Commission, it's Diane Luiz Alessi once again, in both capacities. I've lived here long enough to see what Placer school district has done. Okay, so even in Meta Vista, it was, that property that we're talking about right now was an, part of an eminent domain from a rancher and was a, a smaller parcel. There was going to be the elementary school and a high school parcel. That was bought at a time where property prices per acre were very, very minimal compared to today, as you can imagine, because they've been holding those properties for decades. They finally, during the height of, you know, the sales, were able to sell off the smaller parcel that was going to have the elementary piece, and that was on Stanley, and it's now, went into private ownership. Dr. Salamassi took it, and he took a bath on it when the crash of 2007 and 8. Now, I find it really, really suspicious that Placer Hills and Loomis School Districts are looking to offload this inventory when you're all trying to do. this inventory, when you're all trying to do high density and bring in more school-aged children. So what's going to happen? It's going to get disposed of. Another property's going to get seized in eminent domain at a very high tax, or, or high per acre price. And then all the taxpayers are going to have to build another school in another location someday, but they're going to have to buy the land under it for a very inflated price. So a rancher lost his revenue for raising cattle, not just the land price, as did the both, the other people that were really good friends of ours, I was going to say her name, but I'm going to leave it out, in Meta Vista. For the small, little elementary school that was built there, they lost their revenue from their ag production, along with that school. An eminent domain price is not regular market price, per se. So this is, in my view, asinine to even consider when you're trying to raise densities, and yet you're going to take a, a low-cost school property that will probably have to relocate at some point somewhere else to take on all of those school-aged children. So with that, I yield.
Commenter, please unmute your mic and give your comments. Tiffany, are you able to unmute your mic and give your comments?
I did not, I'm sorry. I did not hear my first name. So this is Tiffany Vanderlinden. I live here in Christian Valley, an area where we do a lot of horseback riding. I'm going to take another turn on this, onto trails. So in the past, we've looked at that particular piece of property in order to connect trails. So on Stanley Lane, Stanley Lane dead ends onto this property, we have a pedestrian equestrian easement on the south side of Stanley. I, I mean, I would like to have a trail corridor wrap around the property. And with the old school site property that Diana Alessi was talking about, we tried to get a trail to loop through to Stanley, and I thought we had it all the way through, but things didn't get signed. So we lost that connection. But we're always trying to find loop trails. So I don't know what the ingress egress is on this particular property, if it is off of Highway 49 on the other side of Kramer, or if it is on Stanley. But if it is on Stanley, our trails would be impacted, and, and it would also increase a lot of traffic. So please keep that in your bonnet when voting for what you're going to do with this property. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. That's it? Okay. Thank you. Seeing no more people who want to comment, I will close public comment, and we will go back to staff, and answer any questions that are, need to be answered.
Just perhaps in, in, in response to the questions that came up, the item that is before the, the commission is consistency finding with our, our general plan. As Ms. Novotny mentioned, the property is currently zoned farm. Any subsequent purchaser of the property will need to comply with the general plan and with the zoning ordinance standards for farm-zoned property. And as she also mentioned, the, the county has no interest that has been expressed in purchasing this property.
I do have a question. This is a little bit of an incongruity, and probably answerable, but, let me see, I heard that the adjacent properties to the east are zoned for 2.5 to 4 acres, but also the properties to the east are all one acre. So that seems like that is inconsistent with the zoning that we're in the report at any rate.
Yes, again, the property, the, the property currently is owned farm. There may be adjacent, there may be adjacent land uses that, or adjacent designations and, and land uses that might be, might be different, and as, as indicated in the report, so.
I don't know. I just heard that, that it was 2.5 to 4 acres is what the zoning was to the east of this parcel.
Sure.
But then also, the report said that all the, all the parcels here are one acre. And so there's, I mean, it may not, doesn't have to pertain to this necessarily, but it seems like an incongruity that.
Yeah, there could have been land divisions that occurred prior to the zoning being, being established for the property. In, in relation to the request before you, again, it's a general plan consistency determination. If there were any future plans to rezon or change the general plan, and, and general plan designation for the property, that would obviously be subject to discretionary actions before, before the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I understand that, yeah.
Anybody else? Does the property have water rights on it? And if so, how many?
I'm not, we don't know. Staff doesn't know at this point.
Okay. I have no further question. Um, yes, go ahead, Mark.
I'm trying to form the question. Throughout the rezon process, we've been talking about, there was a lot of questions about, and why we're not looking at government-owned properties? Did this come under the scope at any point of the review of available properties to potentially rezon? I'm just kind of curious.
There wasn't evaluation of county-owned properties. There was not an evaluation of school district, of school district-owned properties. No, there was not.
No, I understand that. Okay, good. Thank you.
I think it is worth mentioning as well. Because it is a school district property, the school district does not need to comply with the county's zoning requirements if they have a two-thirds vote. So even if we did rezon it, they wouldn't be subject to it if it was owned by the school district.
And they don't come under the same rules and regulations, like a city municipality or county, that if you own property, it has to be first available to low-income housing, correct?
No, but they do need to comply with the Surplus Lands Act, which requires that if they are selling any portion of property, like any public entity, they do have to provide notice to relevant jurisdictions, as well as certain affordable housing groups, to give them the opportunity to at least make an effort to purchase it.
So they have first right of refusal as well, like they would on a county or city property?
It's not first right of approval, uh, first right of refusal, but it is a notification provision.
Just a, just a notification. Okay. Good to know. Thank you. I have nothing further, so if nobody else has anything, then I would ask for a motion on this. Can we have the motion put on the screen? Maybe not? Oh, okay. Well, then we just.
It's included in page.
Seventy-four.
It's included in the packet, but I'll read it in the record for purposes of people on that.
If you don't mind, please, thank you.
So there's two actions being requested. The first one is to find that the disposal of the proposed subject site by the Placer Union High School District is consistent with the applicable policies of the Placer County general plan, the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, and the Placer County zoning ordinance. The second action item being requested would be to determine that the proposed action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA Guideline, Guidelines Section 15378, and Public Resources Code Section 21151.2, since it is an administrative report that will not result in a potentially significant physical impact on the environment. And for purposes of this motion, they can both be taken together, if, if there is an interest in doing so.
So I'd make a motion that we approve the two, two items as a planning commission. They were, they were stated.
Second by anybody? We have a first and a second. Can you have a roll call, please, Megan? I mean, Kelsey.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alves?
Yes.
Commissioner Watts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Demattei?
Yes. Question passes. Anything, that concludes our hearing for today, so I'm adjourning this meeting. Thank you. Lost in for a second.